All right.
At nine o'clock for the vote meeting order, Star Wars was the leaders. I put the state of the United States to the Republic which stands one nation under God. You did this all. Roll call.
Montler, Freylo, Tracy, Tuzi.
Here.
Erickson.
Here. Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none, approve agenda. Oh, yeah. No, I just have. Oh, hey, I'm wondering if so with the depreciation dinner. There's a mention about the planning, zoning administrator, so I was thinking, yeah, I just want to update on what around that. And the notes on that. Cosm. And what kind of. So they still beginning discussion. We can put that on the tuition reports. So second, with that amendment, if that's right. A portion of the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, close same sign, motion passes. Minutes. I had one little table I caught the report on the park board. The visitation number was actually ninety-five thousand six hundred and seventy-five. And it was up six point six percent. The other number was correct, two thousand seven seven up by fifty percent. So I move to approve with that. Second, a motion in the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Close same sign, motion passes. Any visitors?
Hi, my name is Robert Shirel, I live at three eleven East Washington Health Point. I wanted to thank you for having the Clay County Deputy State's Attorney dismiss my criminal case based on that illegal bench warrant that was served since it was actually identity theft. I have since been told that the Clay County Deputy that actually wrote out my illegal arrest report. Since the deputy with the name on the report was actually on vacation that did the arrest. That person impersonated the Clay County Deputy supposedly Clay County fine. I would like the Clay County Sheriff to please arrest that person who impersonated the police officer. He is pictured on his body cam in the Hall of Community City Department Police Department in the Clay County Sheriff's Office on April tenth, twenty twenty-four. Since I was never marandized, yet I was interrogated by a deputy of the jail, that was illegal, not supposed. Deputy should also be charged. Since this false slash illegal bench warrant was actually submitted by terrorists slash criminals under the guise of being hires contract investigators. I consider them to be the worst terrorists on homeland since nine eleven. Supposedly they are Steve Gardner, Josh Gardner, Crewit, and Randy Murray McCruitt. Depending on which name they were using at the time. But magistrate judge case of stores in Clay County more sweeping our hand should be able to help you locate those three persons. Since she is supposedly the ex-wife of Josh Gardner McCruitt. Who was probably involved in filing those on bench warrants. I would appreciate it if you would all have all four guilty submitting a false bench warrant. Be arrested by the Clay County Sheriff for election fraud and making a big bet. Since it's obvious the reason they had him falsely arrested while campaigning and while I was trying to report their election fraud to the sheriff that same time. This false arrest may have cost me my election because of the newspaper vote that I was charged, yet I was never charged. Therefore, I would like to know what the state, the county South Dakota Attorney General and the South Dakota Secretary of State think. Should take place to remedy the situation. Usually when election fraud occurs causing potentially causing the person to lose their election, that person actually wins the election. Is that the case here? Speaking of election fraud, I've been told by those terrorist criminals under the guise of being IRS contract investigators, their judge of church district seventeen. South Dakota State Senate candidate in this last primary election and I actually won our primary elections in Clay County. The first, or and or the last digit of the total primary votes for both of us was left off the beginning and or the end of the both figures. So I actually liked fourteen hundred instead of four hundred or four thousand instead of four hundred. I was told that Dina Wall Raven, Kevin O'Kelly, and Ray Ring also had the same thing done to their elections. I would appreciate if the Clay County Sheriff's Office would look into this and if necessary, please file election fraud charges. For those that maybe did this. And I'm not blaming the auditor because it could have happened in between the computer, one from here to here. Under the guise, I am sure that the South Dakota Attorney General will be very interested in that also and understanding that it occurred that probably occurred in the county also. I would also appreciate if the Clay County Sheriff would please arrest Deputy State's Attorney Katie Leary, Clay County Public Defender, Seth Klans, and magistrate judge Casey Sorenz in Clay County for breach of attorney. Also, since I was drug while in the county jail. Poisoned, raped, and tortured. I would also like those responsible one arrested and charged by the Clay County South Dakota Sheriff's. I'm curious as to what the South Dakota Attorney General's reading was on the illegal court meetings of all the times I was in court with magistrate judge Sorenz. We both knew in the Clay County since those recordings were performed by them. Under the guise of being IRS contract investigators during the illegal IRS investigation. Again, because I was a county commissioner myself, I appreciate your time and all that you do. I thank you for everything you do. Appreciate it.
Thanks, be in the visitors here. Hearing none, no, entertain a motion to go to dish board. Come over. Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion passes. Put the whole tag contract for the fee more work. They should sign it. The chairman signing the contract. Second. A motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion passes. Everybody have anything else for dish board? Move to come out of dish board. Second, a motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion passes. For regular session. Um, Scott.
All those three is for the entrances and all combined with. With R I P. Walk, structure being the lowest seventy-four thousand. And it was eighty-three thousand. Did it? Oh, I guess I'm just so much to go forward.
Move to prove the Walker bit. A second, a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
Rhonda.
So in regards to the resolution of establishing a fee for property tax records, I have made the amendments to it that you guys suggested. Up to six hundred instead of five hundred. And I guess I'm. Just waiting for approval.
Looked pretty good to me, seemed like it included all the things we needed there. So and with this, would escrow companies be the only place that you would be able to waive the fee or does the and prior to receipt of payment just be or any other instance? If you haven't been paid yet, you could.
I would, yes.
Yes. So I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five oh six.
Second, a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Delverston.
Aye.
Tuzi.
Aye.
Freylo.
Aye.
Freylo.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, thanks for bringing this to our attention. What's up and was on my radar.
Michael, the design build.
Great, I'll just pass it to the. This is really going to be pretty short. Just kind of, I want to just give you guys an update, I spoke with Tegra, Tyler and Dick, they're going to make a way down here next Tuesday to. Give more detail on this, Tyler works under, he's an associate for Tegra, that's what I understand it. He did most of the work on this five page document, but you guys now have a seven page document. I think as you read through it, you're going to understand why design build has been such a frustrating and difficult thing to do in South Dakota. I've read through a couple of files, I still have a lot of questions. So I asked Tyler if he could make himself available to try to further. Describe kind of what's inside of this, essentially though, as this should work. This should be the template we utilize for other projects where we don't need to have an engineer and architect necessarily come in. And then draw a plan, obviously the. The building or new law enforcement center, we were going to have to, you know, the contract manager risk, because I understand it would be a much better procedure for the county. Than a design build, some of these smaller renovation projects, design build is generally probably considered a better process. Just understanding it or having your head around procedures is going to be the harder part. So I won't really get into it at all with you, just I don't feel like I've got a super good understanding of it all, I can tell you what you have to do though is. Under section five, you create a kind of board review committee, a three team committee, it can be. And that committee is consists of the facilities manager, one county commissioner, commissioner, one third person. There also could be non-voting members on that. At the board review committee, you suggest that I probably want to be one of the non-voting members just to help legally walk through the process. You could have many of the non-voting members, one, two, zero, three, you name it. But ultimately, what you do is. We have Scott solicit, you know, the type of work that we're looking for. People submit stuff back to us, we're going to choose three contractors that we. Want to work with, at least three, a minimum of three that we're interested in working with based off of what they return back to us. This is where this gets really interesting and you get to decide under section eight. And what type of criteria is the most important just from the county's perspective? The timing of the project, the part of scheduling goes, the technical criteria. And you get to wait all of those stores. And so what happens is the committee essentially interviews. The folks that are selected as potential candidates to work with the county. And the committee gets to decide, okay, I'm thinking like the courtroom security project, timing is going to be very important. Because, you know, if they're going to drag on for weeks and months in that courtroom, the courtroom is going to be, you know, they're padding that area. You know, with the construction done quickly, it's going to be a very important task in that area. Maybe it's not important if it's in a different part of the courthouse or a different building that the county owns. So the county committee gets to decide kind of what's important, so you can see on page seven.
So under that criteria. It doesn't necessarily mean lowest bid is guaranteed.
Correct.
Lowest responsible bid.
Yep.
Based on criteria.
Precisely, so if you look at page seven, you'll see that they even lay out a, like it's called best value selection formula. And so here, the committee just, you know, made a decision as to what was most important, that total has to equal a hundred. You see back on pages five and six where the criteria itself under eight. Maximum scores equal five, maximum score following figure, that equals up to a hundred, so you're giving a hundred total points. And then when you come back then to this chart on seven, you'll see that under this analysis, firm A had the quality score of ninety and even though they were the most expensive. They had the quality score that was the highest by a pretty substantial amount. And so here, under this, the committee will be bringing. The recommendation that the commission go with firm A, but ultimately the decision is up to the commission. The committee brings the recommendation, but the commission is ultimately responsible for making the decision. So I think in this, you could ultimately make the argument that for a hundred thousand dollars cheaper. C, ultimately have a quality score B four, then the commission would have to decide whether or not. That reduction in price is worth the reduction of quality score that I commit. So it gives, it's going to be a complicated process, I think to get started. But once we're moving forward with it, I think it will be really advantageous for us. Fox Elder is kind of what utilized this from to save South Dakota. City of Fox Elders, City of Bracken City, one of the examples that I have of the answers that Tyler's used to kind of crack with. So other places we're utilizing it, we're not going to be the first one. There's still some things that I think need to be worked out overall, hands on deck with it, I think when Tyler comes in and gives a brief indication, I pull them all of us. Yeah, this is something I can add through and you can close it.
People are precise. In your, in your version of me through, just kind of high level, so like, do you think that the complexity of this represents value? That it's complex because they are addressing real needs or is this where the complexity is represent even through state law? Ideally written to allow something like this, so you're like, okay, well, we got to make sure we check this box and check this box. Or run from L S C C L, so and so, like, which, which of those is this?
I think there's, I think there's real value, I think just getting to the point where you understand it well enough to utilize it properly is going to be the hardest part. Okay, Stacey, I think Stacy Waters, you have the state engineer. I talked with her about this, it's been twelve or thirteen months ago now. And she said she can be an absolute resource for us as well, and maybe the length of this on day project. Oh, who's that? She's a state engineer, I mean Stacy Waters out of here. And so she's been a real asset as well, I haven't spoken with her often, so it's been probably over a year now, but she gave thirty or forty-five minutes and bounced. Questions off to her as it related to the contract manager, or this person for the time filter processes. And they utilize this process a lot, from what I understand. So I think that there is real value and as they described it to me as well, it's like, once you. Understand this and start utilizing it, you can do it for a lot of projects. You know, so this is the hope is that this just becomes a procedure so we can use now and in our projects in the future. You know, that don't require. Rock, rock, ability construction, but not to a massive renovation, smaller portfolios. You know, or smaller county projects that are still going to need to be paid out. It's also advantageous because the county gets to decide what's important here more than just.
Great, it's a, you know, sometimes you, I'm sorry, it's just sometimes it seems like there's some kind of trends and stuff, like there's more and more tips because people are like, oh, tips are great, let's use them. If, if this is something that's being utilized more or you see in any legislation in the upper that could. Change or affect this.
Not to my knowledge, that I don't have any, and I, and I, so I think that'd be an interesting question for Dick because he said that. He's done this design building in other states, but they're leaving to stay away from it, South Dakota is the complexity of it. Okay, so there's, there, there are certainly other states utilizing design building and more user friendly manner. So certainly something that perhaps down the road would be nice to be changed to me, but I'm not aware of it currently.
Thinking, you know, Sadeco is always offering up, you know, ideas for good legislation, so it's like, it's just too complicated, you know, maybe that's. Twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, and I think that'd be, I, I think Dick could give some insight on that, about other states that you can utilize the design build or accounts out of the difference from the other states. We don't. The definition of a project, would, would we use this for all projects or would we have a twice threshold or? I think a threshold is, would be the in project, public improvement project that needs to get out. And so I think we could certainly move off of that as well, I don't think that there's any other mandate that would utilize design build either. So and probably some clarity to that, I recognize that as well, the question was, that we never tied into it, there was a couple of things in here. That one was one of them, you could probably describe that or define that it would be better. There's another one that talks about anonymous. Anonymous bids coming into the facilities manager, but the facilities manager is one of the members. So they probably don't want it to go to the member because it should still be anonymous in, so that's some things like that, that I think each government entity probably does a little bit of difference and. Scott's not in here anymore, but I think Scott has some skills specific to writing some of these, that I have a pretty, you know, facility manager would have. So I think he's a real asset that we can lean on today. If we're going to have somebody with this specific kind of skill, that I think we would. Would be able to utilize this project quite as this process quite as easy, but I think allowing. From speaking with Dick, he feels very confident in Scott's ability to be the spearhead for the county on a lot of this, and if you do have somebody with Scott's role, maybe you probably would not want to utilize the design build process because of how complex it is.
And then you have to figure out how complex the projects would be too, if you introduce this, like the jail, this would have never occurred for the former portion of it. Yeah. It, it could. But it would a lot more hands on for us. It would have been, you know, private costs as well.
Yeah, so I wanted to give this document to you all to have a chance to review it, I guess, and I'm still left with a lot of questions. And so I'm hopeful that next Tuesday's presentation could be the year for all of us. So first conversation I had with Dick and Tyler before they had sent these documents over, so I have a review now, I don't. But you have to, but there's still a lot of questions and uncertainties, but I think it's one of those deals that once you start understanding it and you start putting it in practice, it will. Then you feel very strongly that this is the right.
He's putting a number. That's what it all was, kind of just your rating.
Yeah, your ranking, exactly.
Yeah.
You have your ranking, your bidders, and, and then you get to decide who you want to work with a little more. I mean, you still have to be responsible, obviously, with what you're doing, but you get to decide what's most important on this project, when you're making that determination rather than just. You know, most responsible bidder.
And what's the bidder that doesn't get it, you can say, hey, this is what we use, this was our checklist.
Or precisely, yep, and it's anonymous, right, that's the other thing, as, as the, as the technical team, committee works through it, they're not looking at who the, who the names of the companies are that put in there, looking at the. The actual response that they gave or how they're going to do it work. And then that's what they're making their decision on, they give the recommendation ultimately.
Well, it seems that this becomes more and more common thing. Dr. Ashley. Call, call for this.
Correct, yes. And I think, I think that it's a good thing for the county, it gives, it gives us a little bit more leverage. And to even vote accountable, so I think before that purpose, that's a little different thing. And if you're still allowed to, you know, you're not, you're not bound to any of the things. Say, no thanks, we're going to go back to the drop course.
And it keeps us from having to hire an architect or engineer.
Correct.
So they, I mean, puts on the contractor, tell us what they, they need some done.
Yes, and they're languid in here even that the, they have to, in certain situations, tell us who the subcontractors are too, and so I think it protects us pretty well. So we know who's actually going to be doing the work, what's been been out to.
Any other questions?
It's maybe, maybe more on us than to determine whether an engineer or an architect is required. But if they might think it isn't, and we might think what maybe can protect our long-term interests, it actually is, I don't know. Anyway, lots of things to think about.
Yeah, and I think generally, as I understand it, I can just be another good question for Dick, I think if you are going to, if you know, get, feel that you need to utilize the services of, of an engineer or architect. Pretty formally, the problem is that the contract and their relative procedure, the time for that product, I would say.
So it'll be a pretty Friday decision considering projects, the direct. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions? Hearing an extension office internet service calls. Do you have those?
Yeah, they're in there.
In the package.
Yes.
Oh. Well, I can give you the rundown, they, so Blue Peak did come through with one. They have a one gig, so a thousand megabyte download, a thousand megabyte upload for a hundred twenty-five dollars a month. No tax, no equipment fee, wifi routers included, and a hundred dollar installation on first bill. And there is nothing, no language in there saying that that is a contract, so there's to be month, month, can cancel at any time. Midco came in with a range. Asking us what they would want a formal proposal on, so they had. You know, a hundred megabyte upload and download speed, so a tenth of the Blue Peaks offering for a hundred five dollars a month for a twelve month contract. Ninety-five dollars for a twenty-four month, goes all the way down to seventy-five dollars for a five year. And then they also offer a double that at two hundred megabyte up, download speed. For the hundred and thirty-five dollars a month for twelve months. Bottoming out a hundred and five dollars five years. Seems like, in my reading of this, it's, Blue Peak seems like a lot more value per megabyte and a lot easier to terminate. I guess that'd be the way I'm leaning. I had an interaction with them actually just, just yesterday about a courses and personal service and they, they terminated immediately. That right away. Or I'm also about this better customer service than what I had, I think previously I said I had some issues with this customer service. My most recent action was pretty good. I, I do think they go, it's been at this a long time, and the general buzz that I hear is the thing I've heard. Liability.
Whose line does it go through into the building, I mean, is it, is that ours? Or is it midcos or whose? I mean, can we, can we, can we switch companies and not have to run the line? A new fiber.
Some answers, no, there's fiber to. The lot line essentially, and then they would, they would bring it in for us. And I think it was like a hundred dollars, yeah.
Is anybody feeling really opposed to the Blue Peak thing?
Yeah, I think that's.
I'm going to be to approve of the Blue Peak bit, I say.
A motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion passes. Oh, the Surrey National. Recreational River Access Project, I don't know if it's dated to.
Okay, so we've got that set for seven PM on Monday, February tenth. There is a virtual option, Sophie Johnson set that up, so I've got Microsoft Teams meeting link. It is available for that, so.
And that is at the library.
At the public library in the Cozak group, the large.
Is it seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock, yep.
Very volunteer workers compensation coverage. Yep, so the. It, it appears through, what areas we go back and forth with, that we can add workers count on, on this, he can, he sees one employee for ten dollars a month. That would be very beneficial to them if we can. Kind of a short. Short and sweet explanation to that, it's very, I know you had started looking at that before I took over, but. Now we actually have a moving forward where it'd be ten dollars a month to add them, so. If there are no objections.
Or per year, is that right?
Where's it?
I think it is per year, I know that you say that, I think it is per year.
Yeah, it says per year in the, in the email here, I've got it up. Now that's my cost, it's ten dollars per volunteer per year. So with that, ten dollars a year, so we're talking twenty dollars for one season employee. And yes, sounds like very affordable risk.
Yeah, yep, I would, you know, unless anybody had been able to discuss that, I would, that we would. Yep, I would, uh, you know, unless anybody had been able to discuss that, that we would cover this E and seasonal employee.
I second that.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion passes. And we've got the, the REIT fund loan application.
I know, so I should put that on for this week's agenda. And I did go through and fill in what I could or what I knew the answer to anyway. There are some areas where we probably need the knowledge or have this knowledge or somebody's in line.
And that's what I was. The question become way more than originally, we were going to um see the definitions related to.
Not active attempts. Then we could not say we're in a life.
But I think, I think probably.
Yep, this was, it was helpful to get an idea of kind of what word framing of this. They've got their origination fee in there, you know, and it looks like six thousand probably for what we're expecting to borrow. One question that uh I, I've been wondering is what their expected uh payback term is like. So what are, what are, you know, I know we could.
That's up to us.
We just pick the number of years to pay it over. Do they have a maximum amount or a minimum amount or?
I have to clarify that.
Do you have an expectation of?
I wanna pay it off in five years, five years. But I would take, depending on what the, how the interest rate goes, if it's locked, if it's fifteen years, I'll take the fifteen just in case. But uh, I'd still like to pay it off faster.
And the, the uh. A B Rs you mentioned, those are, those are.
Four and six is what you mentioned, I think. Four for the three, first three hundred thousand, six for the, for David.
Do you know if there's anything about having to pay off the four before we get to pay off the six or anything like that, or how's that?
No, it's just, it's, it's all the same. It's, you consider it one more, because it's gonna be average if.
Okay.
If, if, if it was equal.
Gotcha. Okay. And yet we have an idea on timeline for just waiting a little bit to see how lawsuits are.
I think we submitted no matter what. They're easily explained.
If they are, and I also, I looked back into my notes and with, with James, I think we're still. For those, so I'd say.
You know, a lot of that, a lot of that stuff is boilerplate anyway. Um whether you were at the S B A or any full interest funding. Especially when it's an individual, they wanna know that type of stuff.
Sure.
Yeah, that it wasn't fraud. It was just like bankruptcy that was on that application. I'm sure county or municipality couldn't went through bankruptcy, but yeah, we hope not. So I think we should just finish filling it out and submit it. At least get that ball rolling. This isn't an acceptance.
Prior to that, we could calculate out what the.
We don't have to do it either. If something comes back and it's huge red flag. We just don't take it. That happens all the time.
That's on the game. Thanks for bringing the details.
You wanna get a. Probably, this would be, I think you've talked a little actions. So do we need a motion?
We'll take one.
I make a motion to submit the application for the loan.
Second, a motion in a second, any further discussion? And just for people watching, this clarification, it's, we're not taking the loan yet. We're just submitting, it's an application.
Have we been on the record on what this is about?
I believe so, but it's for the road project, road project and the old S L F mill site. Which is west of Mecklenburg.
Specifically.
Yeah.
Mecklenburg.
One point, two million dollars in road improvements that are needed out there. We have a six hundred thousand dollar agribusiness. Well, uh grant from the state that's gonna cover half of it. So this is uh, this is an option for financing the other half of the cost of those road improvements. Um on both the state and county road, um that would allow the facility to build.
Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion passes. Can you play Tony Park?
Uh, nothing new.
I don't have anything for, any other building updates? I don't have anything for the law enforcement.
No, I mean, I gave you just one. I'm only updating the votes. That's all right.
Anything for joint jurisdiction then? Those are other commissioner reports.
And just real quickly, uh I've been talking with Katie Heine a little bit and they are starting a little kind of developing corporation. They're meeting monthly and they're also working with the U C B C and obviously with Katie D on that as well. Um. She said it might be helpful to let you guys know that their constituents who live in I R E, then they got the I R E, can develop a corporation of both these entities. Much dollars that they go over in the campaign as well, but um. I was just discussing with her a little bit about possibly help being a part of that. So one, we can stay informed and two, if there's anything to help them as well. They're really trying to foster growth with the Wakanda, which uh. It's been a long time coming probably because since I left, it seems to be going the other direction. So I'm really happy to see this happening and potential uh. Girls of the community, girls of the business community, so. That's great. That sounds like a really, really good idea. And I think it makes a lot of sense for us to be a liaison between Wakanda and the really chamber development company. Yeah, that's great. I don't know if it is official, I mean, if somebody else wants to be a part of it, that's great, but uh I, I have no problem being a part of it since I know most of the people still.
We put that on the next meeting to make it official. Deployment.
Not for that, but uh for for H board, I should, I know Scott was in here, but I did talk to Missy and I mentioned uh. A lot more potential and instantly she said, no, no problem. We love it. So um their, their board's, board meeting is technically Thursday, so. I don't know if we'll need approval for them or not, but uh sounds capable. They would be interested in keeping it instead of trading it back.
Should we put that on for next meeting too? Anybody have anything else for commissioner reports? Well, we'll just, we'll do the planning and so on. I, I thought everybody was somewhere that Drew was leaving, so. Glenn just told me just a week ago, so.
Yeah, I think that previously we only discussed it in executive session, so I was, I was trying to be real cagey about it. And then when it came out at the uh, in the.
A lot of what you.
Yeah, yeah, no celebration. Then I realized, oh, actually, maybe this is. And that's why I just wanna make sure I know like what, um where are we at on the timeline? Are we in the process of talking to H R? Does we have an end date? Um have we?
He never gave us an actual end date. But yeah, we've got nine applicants, I think it is.
Okay.
So. Carrie's gonna get in touch with Tasia, who is our, who's our H R person. Um and she'll. You have, she'll make sure everybody has an account.
You set one up?
Yeah.
Or some, we got another position where you're going. So I do, but I'm sure, I mean, for Glenn, Kevin, you do, okay.
Well, I don't know if Glenn has one yet.
So I gotta figure out how to get back to you.
She'll, she'll have that.
Didn't we have one? Who, who, we got one for something you're doing.
Couldn't we hire somebody since you guys been here?
Oh, yeah. That guy. Highway department. Highway department, uh Winea. We've had some big hires, yeah.
Well, anyway, we'll make sure everybody's set up because the, the extension secretary and the receptionist. We'll be in those evenings or those club sets.
Yeah, I.
The days are confidential.
Okay.
Applications.
I had actually was thinking that we would uh maybe at the commission level have some discussions about position. Prior to sending it out, but the, the job has been listed. I just, I had some concerns that maybe the balance of duties that were in the previous job description might have been too much. For somebody or that we might be, might be more appropriate to rework those. I know too many asked for questions about that. And I hadn't heard any further discussion about whether to. Well, either duty or being passed off or Yankton County's got a great veteran service office over there. There's been discussions about them offering that as a possibility. So I, 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 I had some, some.
We've got nine applicants, I think it's seven or nine, something like that. That's, that's applying for positions, so. So I'd rather keep it here, yeah.
Okay, and as for welfare, I think you discussed this, it's by statute, once uh the census puts our population over fifteen thousand, my office becomes responsible or if I supply one.
Or we're naturally there. And so the expectation that that's gonna happen, right, twenty thirty, one at twenty thirty.
Five years, six years.
So now we need to do it prior to this listing.
Right. And so we, I mean, I can, I, my thought is it makes sense now probably to the timing, unless they changed that statute to bump that number, but they have never done that. I remember it's been a while since I've looked at it, but it's set at fifteen thousand. Uh so the expectation is that my office becomes by law responsible for the welfare. So it makes sense that I start to pay a little amount anyway.
You have nine, is there a, is there a closing date on that or?
No, not yet. I think it's not. It's, it's a lot. And then Kevin said there's sixteen.
There was a question maybe about uh, can they use that applicant pool for the educator that I, I said I would ask, but I said that seems like.
What do you even, for Lawrence position? The state's handling that way.
We have to.
Right. You and I would get invited to that interview, but we uh, not that word. Is there a state?
That's great. That was.
We can run all this. And they're two totally different job sets.
I know that's, yeah.
Any other reports? Anybody need executive session present?
We need to talk a lot.
Okay.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. The vote. Second, I'm motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, we're adjourned. Thank you.